Call this meeting to order. Let's stand and recite the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in it. Let's pray. Lord, we pray that you give us the courage to step out of our comfort zones and try new things. May your creativity ignite a fire within us to pursue excellence and make a positive impact. You brief moment for your own intentions. Motion to approve the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda.
Motion is second to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion to that motion? During Donalds in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries. The opportunity for public comments. Anyone from the public wish to speak before us? One wishing to speak today. Oh, Larry. Good. Well, you gotta, gotta have somebody.
Uh, Larry Newman from Blackhawk. And I've been noticing that Southern Mead County is starting to get the TIF infection from Rapid City. I'm against TIFs. I think it puts the burden on the current taxpayers to develop somebody else's project to make them rich while we wait on services. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Newman. Anybody else from the public wish to speak? Anybody else? They all want to speak for the public. Okay. Well, that's good equalization then. It's just eagerly can't wait to get to talking about equalization today. Well, we appreciate it.
Good morning, Commissioners. Ria Crane, Director of Equalization. Um, in gearing up for this afternoon, we visited with over two hundred and sixty residents about their assessments this year. Um, we feel that we had a pretty good communication going on simply because we have, what? Eight, ten, twelve appeals? I honestly have lost count. How many people are coming in? Uh, we do have some letter recommendations this afternoon. And a few letter appeals, but all is well. We did have three staff members that attended a sales ratio training for continuing education credits. We like those free credits that we're required to get. Vendor applications are coming in. We've got about five thousand dollars to date in vendor fees. And Jill and the Treasurer's Office and Jen have processed about a hundred and ninety-four assessment freezes. It's up substantially from last year, but we'll go through all those statistics this afternoon. Um, John has run the art program. As you see, the art, the posters around the building. We had kids from Faith and Serge's grades K through eight that have participated. And you'll be asked to vote on those at the next April meeting. And John is going to attend a class in Rapid City on April twenty-eighth regarding the impact of short-term rentals put on by Craig Steinle. Some bed and breakfast and some Airbnb type scenarios that we can look at. Now might be your chance, Tony. Anybody have any questions for me?
Any questions for equalization? Oh, thanks, Ria.
Thank you.
Anyone up here from Facilities? Human Resources?
Good morning, Commissioners. Deborah Brandswood with Mead County Human Resources. Uh, the monthly March report was posted publicly online. Uh, I did have a couple other comments I wanted to address as well. Um, I'll go through the HR ones here first. Uh, just a short update on Condorine Associates. They launched into our classification and compensation update for 2025. Uh, we had eleven interviews on Thursday. All department heads participated. And Ria, um, you had two Mondays, I think, right? So I really appreciate their, um, willingness to participate because it gives the department heads an opportunity to speak directly about, uh, what's going on in their departments, any position changes and such. So I, uh, I just thank them for, for being timely and, uh, everybody, uh, participating. Uh, workers' compensation is the second item. We received, uh, Dan Eggers' uh, audit result back. Hmm, the only thing I can say between Dan and I is the original submission that came into question last fall. Uh, it's just messy. Uh, I don't know what happened. Dan doesn't know what happened. But we did receive an additional six thousand eight hundred and thirteen dollar invoice. Um, I spent two days putting together a complete spreadsheet that Dan and I will be using going forward. Um, and everything from the headcount, the workers' comp codes, and the amounts because we do our estimate late August, September. That's submitted. And then end of February, we do the audit and we use the same reports. We can't be that far off. So I'm just giving you a heads up and I appreciate Ria getting that in last night, um, as we got that finished up. It does balance with the end of year payroll, so it's not like we're being overcharged or anything. A lot of overtime made a difference and then some election workers. The other thing that came out of there is we had, um, about five or six worker comp codes that were incorrect. Those have been corrected. And then also in employees that were hired prior to 2022, they had double codes for workers' comp from base rate pay to the default workers' comp. Um, I don't know why that is. It could be because we renamed positions when we had the new study done in late twenty-two, but that has been cleaned up. So a lot of good work came out of it. Um, big project, but we, we got it done over last week. Uh, training, um, attended a training class for FMLA on March eighteenth in Rapid City. Um, also Union One Twenty, uh, sent a note that they would like to extend their submission of union proposals. Um, we've agreed to this. I spoke with, uh, Commissioner Creed on this because the classification and compensation will not be back until sometime in June. So they will have up until July one to submit their union proposals. I've reached out to both Sheriff West and, um, Troy Eastman and also let them know if they have anything they would like to submit to get it to me by the end of April so we can look at that.
Isn't there something under the union contract then where we have to negotiate or have a meeting within, you know, by a certain date?
Um, they have to submit their proposals first, which is April fifteenth. That's the date they want to push out. Yeah.
Okay, but then we're supposed to, I thought there was like a calendar date.
Yes, we will be updating that. Um, I'm speaking with Lisa on that. Um, because there's nothing to talk about until we have something that's, that's submitted.
Again, so my question though is, doesn't the agreement have a certain date by where we're supposed to meet them?
Yes, our date is June first.
Okay, so we can't, it's impossible for us to meet that date, so if the agreement's extended.
That date will be pushed back as well.
Well, we can't extend their date without extending that.
Right. Yes.
So, I mean, you shouldn't agree to the extension of a date, uh, for them to submit if it puts a passive date by which.
Yeah, all the step one, two, and threes will all be changed dates.
They'll all be done at the same time.
Yes, right. That is correct. That will go out in a letter. Yep, you're correct. Um, but, but that will go out in a letter with all the three dates changed. For this year. But there's a follow-up date too after step two. Um, I don't remember what that date is right now, but all three dates will be pushed out. Uh, the other item, uh, just bring to your attention is South Dakota Sherm Conference will be, um, April twenty-ninth, thirtieth, and May first. This year is held in Rapid City, so we'll be driving to that one every day instead of, uh, traveling and spending the night. Uh, the last item, and I asked Sheriff West to join me, um, Communications Supervisor, um, will be, um, transitioning down to an Assistant Supervisor in Communications. We do have this position that was made available back in 2022 when we did our first classification update. Uh, Sheriff West has had a chance to review that and, um, I, I'm good with it, but if you want to speak to it.
Yeah, I'm in, I'm in agreement with Deborah. Sure, Pat West, sorry. Um, yes, I'm in agreement with that and it's a voluntary transition uh, from the current employee to move into that position. And then, of course, we'd need to fill, uh, the supervisor role, so, um, after looking at all the duties and everything that is there, I think, uh, it's, it's a good transition, a good move.
So both of these positions and both of them have classifications, so there would be nothing, um, keeping us from moving forward then. So just kind of wanted to update the Commission on that change. Uh, it depends on where the wage, the current supervisor. Um, you mean downgraded to hers? It depends on where the grades are on the Assistant Supervisor. Um, because she's well into the supervisor grade already, so she might actually be getting, be at the early part of the Assistant Supervisor. So she may not need to have a, a change. We'll wait to see what the classification says, uh, Doreen, before we make that change. I don't want to be moving people's wages back and forth if our new, um, yeah. She will stay, I think, a supervisor until we have a position built.
And see, there's additional duties that need to be done at that supervisor position, so we've, we've discussed with her and, and that's why we're making the move.
Yes.
Correct.
Mm-hmm. I, it, it looks fine to me. I, I don't see anything, but I, I do think we should wait until the, um, compensation updates come back before we move the wage around. What? Okay, okay.
Hey, is there any questions for Ms. Brandswood or Sheriff West on this subject or any other HR matter? No, thank, thank you guys.
Great, thank you.
IT Department.
Morning Commissioners. Tony Cummins, IT Department. Um, start off with the KPI there. You notice that there's a slight change to, uh, this month's KPI. Um, I've separated out the, uh, supplements to, for better tracking and that for you guys. Um, so that's the only change we're there. KPIs are, our work orders are on par with previous years for this time of the year, et cetera. Usual day-to-day stuff. The security awareness, or excuse me, the, uh, security hygiene report, um, pretty much the same. We continue to patch manage, you know, on a daily basis, um, trying to keep ahead of all the, the stuff coming into the county that would kind of catch us out. Um, we are still using our free, um, MDR, malicious domain reporting, um, service from CISA, which is a great assistance. Basically, all the DNS queries go through those guys first before they come back to us. So they cut out a lot of the malicious websites before we even, the end users even get to them or see them. So that's a huge help on that. Um, moving on to, we've had some, um, you know, email issues over the last couple of weeks for, from a couple of different employees, different departments. And I know like Dor, uh, I know Doreen likes to see these kind of, uh, stacks and stuff, so I'm just going to share some, uh.
And you know I messed up.
Well, yeah, we'll talk about that.
Did you take your training?
I, I, I was quick on the finger.
I have, in this building, I have. Sorry, in this building itself, I have three, three users that are specifically Spearfished. Doreen, Ria, and Max, okay? You're my biggest, nothing you're doing wrong. All I'm saying is that, you know, people outside trying to access your guys' email accounts for obvious reasons. Um, but I will share, you have one page and Ria has half a page. I have five pages from Max. Five in the last, and that's, that's over a five-day period.
Really?
So emphasizing the fact on, you know, how important it is to create a unique password for email for the county. Don't reshare those passwords. Make sure that NFA two FA is turned on and that is used when authenticating those logins. You know, that cuts down on a lot of the, uh, malicious actors getting into those email accounts. So I just thought you'd be interested in seeing that. I'll, I'll share this one.
Oh, yeah, most of these, a, a, a lot of mine are from China. Are, are they all traditionally coming from?
So unfortunately, I don't know for sure where they are. Anybody could be sitting in a basement in South Dakota and using a VPN and change their IP address to China or Japan or wherever. Um, just interesting information, you know, this is on a day-to-day and that, like I said, that's over a five-day period, those attempts to try and get into your guys' accounts.
And so then these were stopped by CIS?
They were stopped by our, our system, the county system, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I even see ones from Macau.
Yeah. Deborah's friends. Um, so good news. We take delivery of our new server and MSA, which is our mass storage device that you guys permitted me to purchase here a couple of weeks back. That gets on site here at the end of the week. Um, we'll start configuring, setting that up. What that means is basically we're going to take out, um, two, two current servers that are coming into life. Uh, replace those two current servers with this new hardware. Um, along with that, we're going to be moving all of our virtual machines from the three or four different servers that they're currently residing on onto these new servers, which will create a, um, uh, redundancy for virtual machines for me going forward. Um, it creates a failover clustering, basically, you know, if, if one, if the server on the left-hand side fails, automatically transitions over to, um, one on the right-hand side, for want, simplified explanation. But what that does for the jail, especially right now, uh, the jail's door access system is, um, specific to one VM. And when I restart the server, it takes the doors down for them for the period of time it takes to restart that server and patch it. So this is going to be a great asset for the county for sure for moving forward. Um, once I get all those up and running down, we can kind of talk further about other, um, servers that are coming into life that may be able to be virtualized, put on that and not a physical one, purchased in its place, so. Um, we got a, you know, bit of work to do on that to get that set up initially for us, so.
I, I assume that's going to take quite a little time.
Yeah, I suspect probably two months maybe. Again, we move all the, so right now we have multiple servers with multiple shares for departments. Um, the deeds have a folder that they share their stuff in, Treasurer's, et cetera, et cetera, Sheriff's Department. And so they're all on different servers throughout the campus and not a whole lot of redundancy in place or they're doing nightly backups. What this will do is we will move all our shared folders, department folders, to a centralized location that has redundancy. So.
Sounds right.
And then lastly, our GEO COM is fully up. We're one month in and our dispatchers are extremely happy with the new mapping system.
Sheriff can concur.
He's, uh, he's had the feedback from the guys over there and, and they're really, really happy with it. So we have removed all of the old insight mapping applications and licensing, so we are fully GEO COM now for dispatch and they absolutely love it.
Good.
But that was a good move. Any questions?
Any questions for Tony? Yeah, the only thing I'd like to add is I, I've asked Tony to look at, um, a new, or updating our security, our internet policy. Um, and I have a draft, um, but as soon as I get through it, I'll, we'll send it about, but, um, for everybody in the county, make sure that we're, we're taking, taking his advice. Uh, don't click on things. Um, we have the ability to start shutting some of these things down if we're, if we're seeing some impacts. Um, you know, Facebook during lunch hour is one thing. Um, but if you're clicking on things and you're spending time on those computers during your, your free time, uh, it's a county, county asset. So if we're seeing some issues with those, those, those people, areas, uh, things like that, um, we do have the ability to start shutting some of that stuff down, so that's something we'll, we'll start talking about. Um, but in the meantime, uh, make sure that everybody's diligent in their efforts. It only takes one click.
It only, it really does. It only takes one click and once they get their foothold on it, they stay hidden for as long as they can and try and compromise as many imparts as possible and, yeah, there it goes from there.
And it could be anybody. It doesn't, I mean, nobody's, uh, in the safe on this one.
You know, the unfortunate part about it is it's not just clicking links and emails, um, just random browsing the internet. If you hit a website that has advertisements that's displayed on the left and right-hand side, the owner of that website generally has no input on what those ads are. That's just to generate revenue. And so those, those advertisements on those websites become, uh, infected with, you know, malicious.
Oh, the advertisements do?
Yes. So one of the, one of the big ones for us here at the county is actually, uh, uh, what's the newspaper? Yes. That one, that one pops up, you know, regularly on my, on my detection list.
Really?
And like again, it's nothing to do with the owners of the Black Hills Pioneer or, or any other website for that matter. It's just unfortunate that those websites, excuse me, those advertisements that get injected to generate revenue, the owner doesn't know what's being put onto their website, you know, it's just to get users to interact and click.
I, I wonder if the Black Hills Pioneer even knows that.
Well, it's, it's not, it's not every day. It's just random, you know? It could be, you know, any of the, any of the websites, any of your major websites, you know?
Hmm.
The bigger commercial ones, you obviously, they, they take, uh, you know, steps to protect against that, you know, Amazon and those, the likes of those guys. But your smaller ones that are kind of independently run, it's kind of, they, they need the, the revenue to generate by the advertisements, so.
Any other questions?
Hey, thanks, Tony.
Thanks for your time.
Uh, Planning Department.
Morning, Tanya Vig, Planning, Planning Director. Um, we're up, uh, about six, we're up six building permits this month from last month. Um, inspections are up since springtime, typical increase in product, projects. Uh, Max and I attended, uh, South Dakota Planners Association Mini-Conference in Spearfish where we just, um, Spearfish and Lawrence County discussed their extratorial jurisdiction and how they go work back and forth with that agreement. Um, there, uh, Max and I also met with Next Era Energy to discuss a few, possible future solar, solar energy facility. Uh, location has not been determined. They're just reaching out. Um, this is the company coming into our area. On April first, I did receive an extratorial jurisdiction agreement with the city of Piedmont for them to oversee building permits within their one-mile city, outside their one-mile city limits. Um, I am working with them right now on drafting, uh, we're going to draft a map and we're working back and forth on if they're going to do the approaches, the septic, the whole nine yards that goes with the building permits. Um, we had some questions and working with them right now.
How much revenue does that, uh, that for a, a building permit for us?
I don't know yet. I haven't dug into that. I can work on that for next month.
I was just curious.
Yeah, we, I can go through the parcels and see which septics and building permits come out.
Can I, can I bug you and go back a second? Is that, um, Solar Company, is that the same one that is coming back here that's been out at the, the Grubel, uh, by close?
It's Rock Power. Oh, Balance Rock Power. It's a different one.
Okay.
Um, Max and I worked on, had a, um, a Teams meeting with Mr. Morris regarding the nor, future North Haynes TIF district. We worked on the boundaries, um, solidified those. I know she's working, still working on it. Um, I reviewed the AR Ranches application and plans with staff and drafted, sent a response letter back to the applicant. Still working on GIS, entering new addresses and flats and roads that come through. Questions?
Questions for Planning. So on the GIS, are we still having problems mapping over the, um, history on the properties, correct?
Yes, Schneider's, still have a ticket to Schneider. We're still, and I believe.
Schneider being the software company?
Software. Um, Tony has, we've reached out with Tony. Our IT is helping us work through some of those issues.
Yeah, I've had a couple of people ask me whether the county's just took it off to hide the information or whatever.
No.
Telling them it's just a, it's a software compatibility issue between the two companies, but, um, okay, but.
Trying to resolve it.
Yeah.
Have we had any update from the, um, top shelf construction?
Uh, yes, I, um, Chad and I went out on Thursday and did the X-ray of the foundation walls and the.
Witnessed the X-ray, right?
Witnessed, yes, sorry. Witnessed the X-ray. Um, footers seem to be correct because you can't do the center, uh, rebar, which is normal. The foundation walls are two foot on center. Um, the engineer's report is fifteen inches on center. ME County's ordinance is eighteen inches on center. So they exceed the requirement. They don't meet our requirement, so I will draft an email back to Mr. Seward and state what we had found out in the field.
Good. Any other questions? No, thank you. Uh, let's move down to, no one's here from Veteran Services or Emergency Management. Uh, Sheriff West, do you have anything for us today? Uh, State Attorney, you have anything? Ken?
No.
Okay, uh, let's move down to, Troy's not here right now for Highway. Uh, Auditor, could, uh, we just get.
Okay, uh, let's move down to, Troy's not here right now for Highway, uh, Auditor, could, uh, we just get down to Auditor?
Oh, I think I hear.
Well, we gotta wait till ten anyway for those.
Well, the, yeah, we could go over equipment, run away, and, and the road, but, go ahead, Auditor, we're, you're here.
You have your monthly overtime, or, excuse me, your.
Down to E, E in the agenda.
Yes, you on Reacran, ME County Auditor, you have your overtime report from the last payroll period, which also shows the year-to-date overtime usage by department. Any questions on that? Moving on to E two, I have included your, uh, budget expense and separate revenue reports through the end of March. For you to review.
Thank you for those as well.
Looks like we're in pretty good shape.
Item E three is the, uh, one of the twenty twenty-five budgeted cash transfers. This is something that happens every year, for county road and bridge, the nine-one-one service fund and the emergency management fund, we did transfer half of the budgeted amount. And we did do all of the public library, simply because that's a one-time expenditure at the beginning of the year. Yes, please.
Um, how detailed does, do I have to restate all this, or?
We did give you a recommended action if you would like to use that for motion.
I see motion to transfer. Well, I guess, I'm, I, I can make that motion, or questions first?
So, these are out of general fund to those budgeted items. So, for instance, um, county road and bridge fund, we are transferring half of, uh, the one point two million in there. Um, out of our general fund to the road and bridge fund.
That's correct.
So a total of two point four million dollars for the year, roughly. Gets transferred out of our general fund into the road and bridge.
That's correct.
Um, just so everybody's kinda keeping track of that, um, that's about half our budget for the Highway Department, so. Big number moving out of general fund.
This is all budgeted, this.
All budgeted numbers, but.
Of course, this is all budgeted, this has to go into these accounts.
Our road and bridge levy does not cover.
Right, and all this is bookkeeping, yes.
It is.
This is, we don't actually move a lot of accounts into speci- we don't have a separate account for every one of these. Yes, I just allocates the money.
Statutory, we just can't have a negative amount in those funds.
Yeah. That's the only way to pay for highway funds is out of the two oh one account, so it's gotta come from general for the two oh one, essentially, it's just bookkeeping, basically.
I was just making the point that road and bridge levy does not cover the cost of item, yeah.
Only covers a mere fraction. Have you run that percentage?
I have that one.
Oh, it's not even, it's three hundred and sixty thousand out of a seven million dollar, seven million dollar budget, so.
Uh, but I mean, a lot of people think that it does, and so it'd be nice to be to say that's five percent.
So whatever that percentage is, um.
We are a tiny little county.
I know. Yeah, yeah.
Let's, uh, it'd probably be, we probably better make a motion for each one. Hate to be that technical, but, uh, uh. Go ahead, Talbot, you're, you're a wordsmith.
Yeah, okay, I make a motion to transfer money from the general fund, not gonna reiterate the account. Uh, from the general fund, uh, into the county road and bridge fund in the amount of one million, two hundred and three thousand, nine hundred and three dollars and fifty cents.
I'll second. Motion second on the floor to transfer one point two oh three, nine oh three fifty, general fund to the county road and bridge fund. Any discussion to that motion? During non, all the favor say aye?
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries.
Make a motion to transfer money from the general fund into the nine-one-one service fund in the amount of one hundred seventy-eight thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars.
I'll second.
Motion second on the floor, transfer one hundred seventy-eight thousand, three hundred and sixty-nine dollars from the general fund to nine-one-one service fund, any discussion to that motion? Non, all the favor say aye?
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries.
I'll make a motion to transfer money from the general fund to the emergency, emergency management fund in the amount of eighteen thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars and fifty cents.
And I'll second.
Motion second on the floor, transfer eighteen thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars and fifty cents to emergency management fund, any discussion to that motion? During non, all the favor say aye?
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries.
Make a motion to transfer money from the general fund to the public library fund in the amount of sixteen thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars.
I'll second.
Motion second on the floor, transfer sixteen thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars into the other general to the public library fund, any discussion to that motion? Non, all the favor say aye?
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Down to item E four, Dodge Ram advertisement.
With the last meeting, you had tasked me with coming up with a proposed flyer for you to review, to put in the newspapers. In addition to an actual legal notice that needs to be published in the legal section, so I did, um, and let me preface this with, thank you, John, very much. He was, he was the instigator of actually making this all come together, but here is our proposal, and we're open for your suggestions as to how you'd like to see things different.
I, I would add in there, it doesn't appear to have any body damage, does it, John? Because if it doesn't, I think we should say that.
Got some, I mean, there's some in that picture.
Well, I don't know, some of that's just dust, isn't it? Not, not saying that.
Categorize, because it's open for public inspection, let them inspect it.
I'm gonna turn your mic off.
Oh, does it?
Yeah, it does have some minor, but I think Talbot's right, it's, you know, you let, anytime you buy a vehicle like that, you kinda inspect it as yourself.
Okay, okay.
Uh, does it have, I thought, I thought I read this earlier, but I don't see it, does it have, uh, that, that we can refuse or deny all bids or reject?
I believe that that is in the legal notice, but let me double-check that, let me pull the legal notice up.
Do we need that in the ad as well?
No.
I do have that right below all the bullet points, that you've reserved the right to reject any and all bids.
Okay, as long as that's in there somewhere. Any other questions on this flyer or legal notice?
I think it looks good.
Yep, I agree. Uh, we, well, you will need action for both, so you can, I'd accept a motion for, for both on one. Or for each, whatever you wanna do.
I'll make a motion to approve the flyer and the legal notice for the newspaper. For the bid, um, May fourteenth at ten AM.
Uh, May thirteenth.
May thirteenth, sorry.
Checking my dates, but yes, it is the thirteenth.
Motion second on the floor to approve this flyer and legal notice, any discussion to that motion? During non, all the favor say aye?
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries, let's go back up to Highway, C one.
Good morning, Troy Eastman here, Highway Superintendent. The first agenda item is our, um, rental rates that we go through annually, uh, to make any adjustments based on last year's costs. That we experienced for running our equipment, fuel, and all this and that that go along with it, in case, uh, county residents. Reach out and would like services done on private property or their driveway, something like that. Uh, this year, I mean, you, we're looking at the ones from last year that we were using, and, um, on the other attachment that's on the agenda. They're within board docs, or within public, excuse me, they show the FEMA rates. Versus our, what ours calculates for primary and secondary roads that we use within our system. The FEMA rate, I guess, is the, like, the national average, or however they come up with it, I'm not exactly sure their formula, but we're just looking at the numbers, and it's. It makes a little bit more sense to me, and, and, uh, depending on which piece of equipment, but more or less, anything that we're gonna be doing is. You know, road grading, maybe some mowing is about it, or snow removal occasionally too, so those are the primary pieces of equipment that we would probably be able to offer.
Is there any, uh, there's different for government and non-government, so is there any government agencies that we're currently in partnership with? That we, we trade, I know different road agreements and stuff like that, but, I mean, is there any that we mow some of the, you know, that's, I guess, the partnerships like Ozebau County, but. But really, there's, I, I'm wondering if we just keep it the same, is what I'm trying to get at, because it'd be a little less confusing for one, and, and number two. You know, government rate, they, they can levy taxes and stuff, a lot of them can, I mean, it's the taxpayers that are, so it, to me, it just will be the same, in my opinion. Not cheaper, not any less, just the same.
Yeah, that's simple, too.
I would also suggest that there has been some confusion on, on these, uh, uh. I would just include the operator rate in all of them, and just make a note on there, uh, that all prices, all rental rates includes an operator. Because we're not going to rent out to machines.
Yeah, exactly.
So, it would just, yeah, it has to come with an operator, so I, um, yeah, I would just recommend, you know, like, if you want a hundred dollars, or it's a hundred and five. Just add that to everyone.
Okay.
Would be my preference.
Yeah, I, I mean, the operator's on there at eighty, um.
Well, that's the non, that's the government rate, the non-government's a hundred and five. So I would just make it a hundred for the operator, and, or you go eighty, I mean, it, wh- whatever rate you decide, I would just add it.
Okay.
And so that, and they just take out equipment operator, unless there's, I guess, unless there's ever. The only other thing, we may need equipment operator, we may need just operator at some rate, because if it's a job. Um, I, I guess I was wondering why we have like, things like skid steer on here, but then, let's say someone can't build their approach, or something like that, and they would have. But that's gonna take more than one guy.
So, I think the reason for like, skid steer is, uh, when Pat has to clean up a right-of-way, um, and we have to use equipment. A lot of time, we did that with some junk in a right-of-way.
Sure, that, and that's, that's what I was getting at, that I, or like, say, somebody couldn't build an approach, so they would say, hey, could you guys come build that for us? But there probably should be something on there of just, uh, if you have to send an extra guy with that equipment operator.
Sure.
On there, is what I would suggest, because something like that would take two guys, probably.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I would just add equipment operator, eighty, fine, for that, or do you wanna go a hundred for equipment operator, just add that to each of these equipments?
I think, uh, a hundred's fine, eighty's fine, I'm good with either one, um.
And then maybe go fifty for, uh, if you need, I don't know what to call it, uh, uh, labor.
Yeah, that's fine, 'cause there's, uh, yeah, an operator, sometimes all it is is somebody with, holding a flag, you know, directing traffic, whatever, so.
Might have a shovel that's leveling stuff out, or something while someone's running a skid steer.
Just so I am following this, you've got equipment rates, but these equipment rates are always gonna take an operator.
Yes.
Um, you know, no way we should be at fifty.
No.
For anybody.
No.
Um, I mean, even just to pull a flagger, I, I think you gotta be at a hundred, just to make sure we're covering the cost.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, uh, yeah, and I am, you know, I, I agree with Gary, there should be like, okay, an operating, it should be in bold. All equipment rates are just for the equipment, then an operator has to operate it on top, so you also pay the operator. But you're right, I think we need a separate operator, well, number, because we could have a piece of equipment, but two people have to be there for whatever.
Yep, like an additional operator.
And that's, I think it would be, I guess that's what I'm saying, and maybe disagree with Commissioner Wazork, but I would just add that. Equipment operator to each of the equipment rental rate, and then put in there, all, all equipment rental rates includes an operator.
Yeah, that's fine, either way. And then the additional labor.
Then there's, and then you could put labor at a hundred dollars as well, so.
I like that, but.
Uh, just simply because I don't want, I, I guess Troy's gonna say no, but if someone called up and said, hey, I can, I see I can rent your skid steer for a hundred seventy-five bucks. I mean, we don't, that's, it's, that's not what the deal is, we gotta send our, it's our, you know, our equipment, we're gonna have to send the operator with it.
Right, and it only really works out if we happen to be right in that area, you know, working already, 'cause for us to stop what we're doing and drive across. Halfway across the county to do somebody's approach or whatever, isn't really that feasible, I mean, if we're happening to be right in the area, it works out, but. And not in every case are we gonna be able to provide these services either, 'cause we're usually, you know, have our hands very full in the first place, so.
Sure, and that says in there, it's gotta be approved by the, by you, the superintendent, so, um, that goes without saying, if you can't get the crew. Out to herford or, or wherever, or even Surges, or if you guys are just too busy, it's, it has to be approved, that's, I think that goes without saying.
Yeah, I see the benefit here of having races, like, a road district, you're gonna be out doing roads anyway, that they can say. Quarter mile of ours while you're here.
Right, sure.
I guess that's where the non gov- or the government rate would come in, but I, I would almost prefer just to keep them the same, and just say, this is the rates.
Well, my question is, is when the time starts? Because if somebody really wants something, and it's needed, and it's available, and it's an hour away. Clock start, when you leave the shop, I would assume so.
Yeah, absolutely, for.
Not, not when you get there, and if you do have to go out there, do you have to charge mileage to deliver it?
I would say, yes.
Yeah, I mean, it adds up all of our costs that go along with it.
Because it, it seems like whenever we do a road project, what do they call that?
Mob.
Yeah, that's an outrageous fee.
Yep.
Mobilization.
Um. You wanna take action on this, or would you rather clean some of that up?
Yeah, I'll, I'll rewrite this, and make adjustments to what we just talked about, and, yeah.
Make it back next meeting.
Yep.
I think, and would I be the best, I would include, I'd agree with Commissioner Creed, let's include mileage from where they leave shop. Um, and then that's, the hourly rate starts when they're leaving, whatever shop they're.
Yeah.
I mean, if they're right there, that's what we should be able to, be able to. Okay, well, let's get that cleaned up, and then bring it back next meeting then, and.
Yep, will do.
Move down to New Underwood Road.
Yeah, as you all know, the, uh, road is in bad shape, and this, this winter was hard on it, um, and we're out there working on it, we've been patching it all winter long. We're to the point now, we're just putting gravel in the holes and uneven spots, and, uh, while we've been out there working. I mean, we're watching truck after truck come by, and it's just, you know, it's, it's getting beyond even wasting time with asphalt on it. It needs, it needs more, you know, more than just a quick patch job, and I'm just trying to prolong this as long as possible till we can get it fixed right. So, the only way I can see is to reduce the, the overall load limit, I mean, we have it at seven ton per axle right now, but. If you have, you know, thirty axles, that's a lot of weight, so.
Um, but, Ken, I mean, this may involve you, question. I know the state does this all the time, obviously, you can get overweight, overweight permits all the time, so the county has the ability to issue those as well.
Correct.
Okay, so, but we don't, it, we don't have any fees set up at, currently, is that correct?
Correct.
So, um, it's, the state has a formula that they could do, so we could probably just, we'd have to adopt this at another meeting, but. We could go off of the state's formula.
Yeah, and the, the, the problem is enforcement, you know, and we've had the conversation with the sheriff, they don't have the equipment or the training, uh, on a county road. To weigh the vehicle to see what it is.
Yeah.
Uh, that's why we do, e- every year, ask the Highway Patrol to participate and assist, uh, it's up to them when and how they do that. Um, but it is part of our requirements.
It is rule, so.
Yeah.
So I guess the rea- what I'm going at with this permit, it seems like to me, that the issue we got in when we lowered the weight limit, well, over a year ago now. Was, uh, obviously, we don't wanna mess with trade, but, uh, we knew at that time, from what the engineering firms were telling us, the road is on. It, it is on thin ice. So with that said, I was, I had the inclination at the time to, to bring it, bring it down to eighty ton per axle, which is. In my world is, you know, it's, it's not quite, it's, it's a little lighter load of cattle, but it's still doable, that's kind of an old standard, maybe about fifty thousand pounds. So it's kinda the old standard of what we used to ship, so I, 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 I was kinda leaning toward that way, but then I started hearing from more of the, the farmers out there. And, and they have multiple axles, some of the gravel trucks have multiple axles, uh, and so I didn't want to, we decided as a commission, we really didn't want to do. Mess with those either, but if the possibility that we could come up with some fees or a formula system for permits. It, it almost would make sense to me to go down to, to go to that eighty ton. The eighty ton is the same, essentially, and Troy, you can probably correct me if I'm saying something wrong on trucks, but been a while. been a while since I've calculated this, the eighty ton for most trucks is the same as a seven ton per axle, is that, that, that's.
I mean, yeah, it's, it's, or eighty thousand pounds, sorry.
Yeah, eighty thousand, excuse me, yeah, I was saying eighty tons, your eighty thousand pounds is the same as the seven ton per axle for most trucks. Most of the cattle trucks that I send out are gonna be that.
Yeah, it's very close.
That's gonna be the same, it's when we get into these multiple axles that, that it gets to be the factor. So we would have to work in the meantime of, of getting this permit fee, and I think it probably needs to be done fairly soon because I know spring thaw is hard on them, but I also see, I live very close to that road, and I also see it deteriorating when it's a hundred and five degrees out too, that asphalt gets soft and, and you see a lot of, lot of, so, um, so that would be my inclination.
I've heard from some residents who live along the road, and they said the heavier truck traffic is at night, which tells me this is not locals.
Mm-hmm.
This is a state highway that the state will not recognize. And I was gonna ask Pat, when you guys were out there and you ran that weight thing with the HP, and to me, that's the first time I recall the HP actually being out there running a scale in a lo- in a long time. I was wondering how high those fees were because years ago, and I'm no trucker, but I can remember when Janklow put on weight fees, it, it, it almost caused some truckers to go nuts, but.
And it still, it still does.
It still does, okay, so.
The, the ticket is minimal, you know, that it's a class one, you know, a hundred and eighty, a hundred and eighty-six dollar ticket, but the penalty for the weights can be in tens of thousands.
Okay, so what happened to the, didn't you nab a couple guys? I wanna know how bad they got hurt.
Yes, there were, uh, two that were, uh, issued citations and they were six hundred dollars apiece.
Okay, so.
And I'm not sure how that's based on what weight, but that's what the tickets were.
Oh, okay, so they didn't get weight in addition, or what, what I was trying to get to the.
When we go, when we get the citations that go through the weigh station, they can be huge.
Okay.
I mean, I don't prosecute them, I, I see the numbers, um, they can be very big.
And it depends on how much they're over, I mean, if they can go on up.
And it can be on each axle, it can be the total weight, and, and they all add together.
Okay, so the citation and or penalty for this is different if the HP catches them along the road versus going through the weigh station?
No.
Okay, so then when you said.
No, I'm just saying, the majority of tickets we get come through the weigh station.
Okay.
And those are the ones I see, um.
Okay.
I'm not sure what they, you know, when they were out on county roads, that's not as sophisticated of a system.
Okay, I, I'm, I'm just saying, a, a six hundred dollar fee isn't really gonna halt very many people when they know the chance of getting caught is minimal.
Six hundred dollars isn't minimal, if I was to ship a load of cabs to Philip, that would be about what I'd pay, double my bill.
Yeah, but you're probably not the one running it at night.
We'll send peanut, well, yeah, I guess now you're gonna get us all in trouble.
But.
It depends the weather, if it's a hundred degrees out, you're gonna go at night.
Yeah, yeah, we might send them at five, six o'clock at night for the night before, certainly.
Well.
Well, it's, there's, 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 uh, most of the guys I've talked to that, that truck and make a living trucking are, obviously, they rely on this road, but, but they understand that they're locals as well, they, they, they need this road to go to church on Sunday as well, I mean, it's, 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 it's an important road, so they get that. We don't want it, we can't lose a road, I also, we also noted when we set this at seven tons that this was, we were told by the engineering firm, set it three ton.
Yeah.
And so we, we knew at that time and we begged and pleaded, guys, don't abuse this, I'm not saying anybody did, obviously, you've got some tickets, so there's some guys coming overweight, but with that said, we are on thin ice with this road.
I wanna know those guys with the tickets, were they locals?
That I'm not sure, I'd have to look at the names.
Could you, because I will lay you odds, we are not talking about locals. We want, it's, it's not the locals I don't believe that are abusing this road, people that are using it as a state highway.
Mm-hmm. Any other questions, comments?
Is there any way to get the HP and your guys out there at night? Can you ever find a dead knight?
I, I guess it would be up to them if they wanted to do that, but, yeah, we'd assist with that.
Yeah, I mean, it, it, it seems to me like a big ticket could be a big deterrent, and, you know, truckers radio between each other, if somebody got a great big ticket, I bet you they all know who hauls on those roads at night and from out of state, I think they might find a state highway or go around the other way if they got penalized big enough.
Part of the problem, part of the problem is the Tilford Way Station.
That's exactly right.
Because they know that's open, so they're, they're gonna take the chance of going around it.
That's right.
Any other questions, comments?
Um, I'm, I'm good with either one of these options, whether we keep it at seven tons or eighty thousand pounds, I like the eighty thousand pounds, um, uh, you know, you did give some pictures and we have tremendous damage on that road, um, we're looking at some options to fix pieces of the road, it's gonna be patches, um, likely gonna mill it and put, uh, gravel back in, in place based on, on what we can do, we have some, uh, costs from other counties that we can, uh, piggyback on, so we, we're good there. We're just working through that process to figure out how much we wanna do.
Mm-hmm.
Essentially, um, so I'm fine with the eighty thousand pounds, uh, honestly, it, it's, it's just really deteriorating, in the last year, we've gained, I hate to say inches, but it's inches in depth of, uh, ruts, so.
Yep, that's correct, and we're already putting gravel there to patch it because, um, asphalt plants aren't open for one, and I don't wanna use the all cold patch cuz it won't last anyway, so, so, yeah, we're already patching with gravel just to, uh, make it safe.
It, the other question, we were, we've had conversations, does speed factor into the deterioration of road, uh, Rich, you may be able to help with some of that?
Um, it does, there, there's several different factors on how that speed goes in, the amount of axles, where your load's kinda located on those axles, um, the first picture in there where you see these element trucks and the Roth trucks, where you're able to run seven thousand per axle and then they got twenty axles. You are distributing your weight, but the flexural part of it, you know, you're constantly making the road look like a wave.
Sure.
And that's what it's doing, and the faster you go, some guys try to say, well, it makes it less. On the truck tires, whether you've got curves there, whether you're going up and down a hill, there's a lot that goes into it, but yeah, speed can definitely help.
So, Ken, um, Ken, I've seen it in other states, is it possible to uh, put truck traffic at a certain speed and vehicle traffic at a certain speed?
I believe so, I've, I've seen it.
I've seen it, I don't know if I've seen it in South Dakota.
Yeah, I, I.
In the olden days, it was, they had a speed limit.
I, I think the speed limits on county roads is the jurisdiction of the commission, so you can change it to whatever you feel is appropriate.
Is that, and I guess Sheriff West, is that, uh, would that be tough to enforce, or I guess that would be a, I mean, what would, how would a truck be defined?
That's probably easier to enforce than the weight limit.
Well, that, well, I know he couldn't, but that's why, that's where I'm going is, that is something we could enforce, is, is that speed.
Oh, yeah.
And it's, it's almost getting to the point on parts of that road where we maybe should lower that, I think it's fifty-five now.
Correct.
Uh, but it's, uh, there's parts of that road that probably should be lowered to, to possibly forty-five.
Yeah, the south end is forty-five for ways there, you know, but, yeah, it, it would help for sure.
And I'm, I maybe would be the first to be picked up, so I'm careful as I say this about speed limits on this road.
Yeah, we could definitely enforce that, I, a question, is there, is there a way to sign it that it's local truck traffic only? Can we do that or not?
I don't, Ken?
No.
I wish we could.
Yeah, I've asked that.
Like a truck route type or no?
Uh, well, I know the question came up from your department about a truck route.
Right.
Um, and we, now we just haven't looked into that any further, but that's, that's a good question, I don't know where we'd route them would be the problem.
Interstate, I guess.
Well, it'd be the interstate to.
Interstate Highway thirty-four.
Well, it'd be interstate to Philip or, or seventy-nine here, yeah.
Cuz we have seen a lot of people that just bypass thirty-four and use that New Underwood cuz they're going to North Dakota.
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
Yep, no, I, I don't disagree, but I don't know if the county would have to offer an access point going north-south. Guess that'd be a question for Ken. So would speed be something that would be intriguing as well on the highway side, sheriff's side, I guess you're, we're all here. I, you guys are patrolling that as well, I appreciate it and don't at the same time.
Yes, we're, we're out there quite often.
Yeah, I, I see them quite often, um, okay.
I, I do think, uh, your efforts in the field have been fruitful as well, and I, I believe, I see a lot, a lot of them on Elk Vale as well, and I think that's been, uh, impactful, so thank you.
I do know of one person that has started slowing down on that road.
Does he sit up here?
He does.
Day off thirty-four.
Um, okay, any other?
Well, let's put it on our next agenda to act on a couple of these suggestions such as the speed limit, I think, don't we have to notice that?
Yeah, it has to be noticed, yep, and the speed limit have to be, it just, we can, we don't have to make a hearing or anything, do we, Ken, we just have to put it on agenda? Okay, you'll know by the end of this meeting, so if we have to make a hearing, okay?
So currently, the load limit's seven tons an axle.
Mm-hmm.
It doesn't change, um, next meeting, we can look at either eighty thousand pounds, seven tons on axle and a speed limit modification.
Okay.
I think so, um, and maybe we just put, uh, I guess it doesn't matter, if we put the actual eighty thousand, we could just put, uh, weight limit modification on the agenda, uh, cuz it, it, I don't think we want to go lower than that, but, but, uh, I mean, if we start talking about three tons, I, all of a sudden eighty thousand and doesn't look too bad, is what I think.
Yeah, and then also the fee schedule part of it, that would go along with the permitting, cuz right now, we don't have a system set up for that, but, yeah, that's one of the things I need to work on.
You could have that ready by the next meeting, um, speed limit also on the agenda for that road? Is there any other roads that you think would be important to look at speed limit on as far as, and Ken, I guess that'd be my next question, I think we're pretty sure we can do uh, just truck at the different speed versus vehicle, but I guess that'd be a question, better look into that, make sure we can do that. Is there any other roads that you could think of, maybe we could tackle, maybe just look at some of those and, kinda, visit with your liaisons?
Yep, I'll do that.
I've seen it in other states, yeah.
Separate.
Yeah, I've seen, like I said, but I don't know if I've ever seen it in South Dakota. We don't wanna be like East River.
Since, since you're out there with gravel, doing all this stuff, would you take some photos too?
Absolutely.
We might have people in in a couple of weeks and we might have to have a, a visual for them.
Yep, we'll have pictures.
Real good, any other questions, comments, let's move on then. Brings us to our ten o'clock hearings, a bid opening for the gravel ag- aggregate. You're in a good seat, Troy.
Yeah.
Thank you for you.
Hey, it looks like we have three different gravel aggregate bids. Rogers Construction Incorporated here, be the first one.
They do good work, they can tape that in a little.
Yeah, they did seal it very well.
You didn't need a letter knife.
I'd need to remember that next time. Okay, so the aggregate for the one inch gravel base course, material only, is ten dollars per ton for one inch. They did not give us a price for the surfacing, which is a different spec, they did not give a price for class A riprap, and then they put for the loading, that would be included in that ten dollars a ton. They have their certi- certification of prohibited entity status is here, and then also, oh, their test reports for their gravel, saying it meets spec. Okay? Pleasant Valley Gravel. And they gave us a price of eleven dollars per ton for the one inch gravel base course, material only, and then there'll be another dollar per ton if they were to load us. There is no price given on the one inch gravel surfacing, um, forty-five dollars for class A riprap per ton. Material only, plus I guess the dollar to load us, so, and that's Pleasant Valley Gravel. Okay, Western Construction is the third bid. And this is, um, at their Sturgis location on, uh, Short Track Road. And it is thirteen dollars a ton for the one inch gravel base course, and that's limestone material. They did not give us a bid for gravel surfacing, riprap, they have class A, B, and C, they noted on here for thirty-five dollars a ton, and there's no charge for loading, that's already included, and that's Western Construction. And they have their certification of prohibited entity status here as well.
Did Pleasant Valley have that as well?
No, they did not. Okay, those are the three for the gravel aggregate. Next, we have the magnesium chloride. We have two bids here, first one is from Rosane Construction. Okay, the bid price per delivered gallon of magnesium chloride for the material only is a dollar twenty-eight nine per gallon, and then the applied price for material and application, one dollar and forty-seven nine per gallon. Then for the county resident price, material and application would be a dollar fifty-eight dime per gallon. And that's Rosane Construction. And they have their certification of prohibited entity status provided as well.
You're about the only guy I've seen that doesn't have a knife with them.
I, I normally do, but, like, um, I guess these dress pants don't have as many pockets as I'm used to. Okay, this is. Okay, this is Dustbusters. And their price for material only, magnesium chloride, is a dollar twenty-four-nine per gallon. The material and application is a dollar thirty-four-nine per gallon, and then the applied price per gallon for, uh, county residents is a dollar forty-nine, dol- one point four-zero-nine. Again, that's Dustbusters Enterprises. And they do have their certification of prohibited entity status. Everything looks good. That's all I have.
Any questions, comments?
Do you want to make a recommendation next time?
Yes, I'll review these and we'll make a recommendation next meeting.
Okay. Okay, well, thank you. Thanks, everyone that put bids in. Um, let's move down, then, to any other questions, comments for Troy, while he's up here. Okay, let's move down to commission. F-one on the agenda. I just have a, uh... Uh, application for Faith Livestock, uh, they're, from D A and R, they're just, they, they're just, just advising us that they approved that application, what it looks like to me. And then Stur- Sturgis Area Arts Council giving us their schedule. Questions, comments, any of that stuff? Okay, let's move down to consent calendar. Consent calendar, anyone else talk about, or motion, action to approve it?
I would like to comment, I think Aaron has done an excellent job on the minutes.
I would agree. Thank you, Aaron, for all your hard work.
Because I know those last ones took a long time. I'm pretty sure. Good, okay.
Any other questions, comments, and/or action to approve the consent calendar?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
A second.
Motion and second on the floor to approve the consent calendar, is there any discussion to that motion? Any none, all's in favor, say aye. Prove, same sign, motion carries, uh, executive session. Legal and personnel, I believe.
And contracts.
Contracts. Anybody want to make a motion to go into executive session, legal, personnel, and contractual?
I'll make a motion to go into exec for legal, personnel, and contractual.
Motion and second on the floor to go into executive session for legal, personnel, and contractual, any discussion to that motion? Any none, all's in favor, say aye. Oh, same sign, motion carries.
Somerset already has it.
Yeah, thank you, Larry, thanks for coming.
You turn the recorder on? I got a motion, a second come out of exec. Any discussions of that motion? Any non-holds and papers say aye?
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries. I believe we concluded our business in the agenda, so therefore I declare us adjourned. I suppose we will start at... Start in an hour, which is ten after twelve right now. Let's start at one o'clock. One o'clock, we'll start our order of requisition.
Oh. Oh, okay.
I was going to run home, but I won't.